Twenty-one meeting of the Woodland City Council. It is now six P M. The council is now in session. We are conducting this meeting pursuant to the governor's executive order, which means we are doing it electronically and council members are at remote locations. Now we'll proceed to the roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Present.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Present.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Present.
Uh, present.
Mayor Steller?
Present. Thank you. That's the record show. All members of the council are therefore present this evening. We'll now move on to item C, the pledge of allegiance. I see there among our participants is a distinguished member of the community, Jeff Morgan. Jeff, if you're there, could you unmute yourself, please, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Would love to, Tom. Thank you so much.
Let's stand.
Allegiance to the flag. To the republic.
Nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Let's move on to communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items that are not otherwise on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone, Madam Clerk, who wishes to address us in such a fashion?
Mayor Steller, I don't have any emails, but I do have two members of the public raising their hand.
And are they speaking on items that are not on our agenda tonight?
Well, I don't know. Actually, there's three members raising their hand.
All right. Well, let's, let's make sure they understand if it's on the agenda, we'll take their comment when we get to the item. If they're speaking on something not on the agenda, we'll take their comment now. Please proceed. Do you want to call the first person?
Maria? Maria, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello. Yeah, hi. Hi, everyone. I am speaking on matters not on the agenda on this evening. Thank you for, for the opportunity to address you here this evening. My name is Maria Segoviano, and I'm the new marketing and communications manager at Yolo Food Bank. I'm here to invite you to Yolo Food Bank's inaugural Food for Fairness Summit. It's actually a virtual event this year taking place October nineteenth through the twenty-first of twenty-twenty-one, so this year. And it's exactly how to develop an equitable and sustainable local food system globally. Two UC Davis institutes are actually co-sponsoring the summit. The AI Institute for Next Generation Food Systems and the Institute for Food and Health. It features dynamic speakers and presentations on global and nationwide best practices and thought leadership. This event will provide essential perspectives and perspectives and actionable inspiration for advancing the development of an equitable and sustainable local food system. Leaders and community members of all kinds are encouraged to attend. But more precisely, this event is curated for diversity and inclusion activists, food and agricultural representatives, civic and governmental leaders, policymakers, healthcare professionals, environmental activists, nonprofit leaders, community organizers, academic researchers and scholars, business leaders, economists, state-based representatives, educational professionals, and the like. So save the date, October nineteenth through the twenty-first, and you can visit foodforfairness.org to sign up for more information. We truly believe that our global human health and economic and social well-being depends on the outcomes of these critical conversations. So I just thank you for your time, and we hope to see you there. And if anyone has any questions, you know, please, please let us know at the Food Bank. You can reach out to us. Our contact info is on our website. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Ms. Segoviana. Our next speaker, please.
Is Zane Hatfield. Zane, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Sounds good. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Zane Hatfield, the Director of Programs with Yolo Food Bank. Together with our Operations Director, Corkium Apollo, I oversee the Food Bank's food recovery and distribution programs. With the state now requiring cities to develop surplus edible food recovery programs, you have before you a very clear choice leading to two very different outcomes for our community. You can choose to implement a food recovery and distribution program that meets the letter of the law, or you can choose to implement a program that is both legally compliant and meaningfully advances us towards a fully food-secure city. The community clearly supports the latter. More than a hundred and sixty stakeholders in the social safety net have signed a letter advocating for a comprehensive countywide surplus edible food recovery and distribution program to benefit both food insecure residents and community health. This landmark show of support was sent earlier this week to the city councils of Woodland, Davis, West Sacramento, and Winters, and the Yolo County Board of Supervisors. The stakeholders include community members, civic and business leaders, donors, volunteers, and local nonprofit organizations, stating that a food secure Yolo County is a top priority. A second support letter authored by Sutter Davis Hospital CEO Rachel McKinney was also submitted. With a clear focus on maximizing food recovery efforts, the city council can be the leaders who ensure a food-secure community, and your legacy can be one of bold actions to create change for generations of Woodland residents. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Hatfield. Third speaker, please.
Yes, third speaker is Manuel Candela. Can you hear me, Mr. Candela? Mr. Candela, can you hear me?
I can hear you very well.
Okay, go ahead. You have three minutes.
I have three points, but I think the last one might be in the agenda, so I'm gonna start with the two first. One is a very old for everybody right there in the, in the city council. The bay, the bus bay in Pioneer, even with all the promise for the city council and for both present and past city manager, still the same problem. There is no light, and people can fail. Matter of fact, I failed, I failed two years ago. The second is just an invitation. I, I just would like, if you guys wanna see one day, we have in Woodland an archaeological free museum is there for twenty-seven years. It's used for the, a lot of the majority of schools, for tours, and it's totally free. So if you guys wanna see it, it's very easy to find it. It's in two hundred four zero Northwest Street. And the third issue is the more important for me today, but I think might be in the agenda in the, in the point number ten, because it's something concerning with the Yolo Bus, Yolo County Transportation District. So maybe might be in the agenda, maybe not. You guys can tell me. My question is, we don't have service for the Yolo County Transportation System. So I can wait for the point ten, because I guess you guys wanna talk about the California Transportation to the new plan you guys are saying.
Thank you, Mr. Candela. Do you know, of course, the Yolo County Transportation Board meets on the second Monday of each month at seven P M. Are you aware of that?
Yes, I attend their meetings.
All right. I just want to make sure, because that's, it sounds like what you're discussing is within their jurisdiction, and I know.
Not really, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Steller, because what I wanna respond this problem to the city is because the Yolo County Transportation System, one of the cities they're serving is the city of Woodland, is part of the seven O eight entities they support the Yolo County. And basically, in Woodland, we don't have bus service for two lines and the line number ten, two-ten and two-fourteen. And I was finally after eighteen months in four today, that will be forever. They will never be restored.
Thank you, Mr. Candela.
You're welcome, Mr. Steller.
All right. Have a good evening. Any additional public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, there is a caller on the phone. I just want to remind anybody calling by phone that if you do pound nine, that you can raise your hand.
All right, so we have a caller. Please identify yourself and proceed.
That was just, no, I don't see them raising their hand. It was.
All right, so we don't have a caller, apparently. All right. That concludes a public comment for this evening. Thank you to our callers. We now move to communications for council staff comments and requests. Why don't we begin tonight with Councilmember Vicky Fernandez? Vicky?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Steller. Just wanna thank you for the opportunity to go out and read the proclamation for Evelyn Doll, who celebrated her hundredth birthday at the Californian this last Thursday. So her birthday is actually July eighteenth, which is this last Sunday. She is a very energetic and warm Woodland resident who resides at the Californian. It was my first time visiting there, so I thank you for that opportunity. I thoroughly enjoyed reading your proclamation on behalf of the city of Woodland, and she was very grateful and appreciative of the proclamation. So that is all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia Cadena. Tanya?
Thank you, Mayor Steller. So I would like to thank everyone involved in the city who brought the fire trucks and rec-to-go out to Beamer Park this past Saturday. We had a wonderful time out there. We had a great turnout, got to meet many people. Children from all over the community actually came out to enjoy the fire trucks and the great events that rec-to-go provided. So thank you to everyone who was, you know, involved in getting that to happen. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Thank you, Mayor Steller. So first, I wanted to thank the Woodland Police Department, especially the Unidos Coordinator for putting on this phenomenal event, Paletas con la Policía. This is an event that I read a lot about and had the pleasure of attending at Casa del Sol Mobile Home Park. It was a great event, well-attended by many Latinos in our community. I really enjoyed seeing the kids interact with the dogs and with our officers and high-five, low-five. It was just a great event for families, and I just wanted to emphasize how important culturally appropriate outreach and events in Spanish as an integral part, as the way we build strong connections with youth and families in our, in our communities. So I just want to celebrate Chief and his team. And Maribel, it was a phenomenal event. I'm looking forward to seeing more of these happen. I know that things are starting to open up, and it's safe to do so. I also appreciated the folks that have stopped by the farmer's market table to ask about our city's anniversary celebration in October. There's a lot of excitement. I was out there a couple of times this month, and I've asked everybody to save the date. Want to make sure everybody knows and nobody plans to be out of town so they can enjoy this, this wonderful event. And lastly, I had the opportunity to meet with some folks after our last council meeting about the tech park planning. Yeah, there's a lot of excitement and great momentum in our community in anticipation of this development. And I think that after our last meeting, there were a lot of unanswered questions that were specific to the school side. So I have asked Mr. City Manager to co-host a question and answer session with Superintendent Tom Pritchard to address the questions and issues around this essential piece of the tech park to ensure that there's transparency, and we truly are working towards building a community out in the southeast end of town. That'll be all, Mayor Steller. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Vega. Councilmember Landsberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Besides my regular duties, I do want to let the public know that we thoroughly enjoyed the State of the City presentation. And I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, or and Mr. City Manager, for including all the council members in the State of the City address, which was last week. I also want to thank the chamber for hosting this event, and hopefully next year we can all meet in person. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you, Councilmember Landsberg. For myself, just a few things. Want to mention that Thursday, July twenty-second, from six to seven, that's this week, the Yolo County Office of Education will be hosting Martin Luther King Freedom Center from Oakland. Event includes a free dinner, features a community book reading at Caesar Chavez Community School, two-twenty-five West Beamer Street. Because if you want the dinner, you ought to RSVP to ANTA. That's A-N dot T-A at Yolo County Office of Education, YCOE dot org. Also, I attended the Yolo County Public Workshop focused on how to commit the resources from the American Recovery Plan. Yolo County is getting forty-four million dollars from that program. And about fifty, sixty folks crowded into the room, and the discussion was lively. We will be having our own city workshops soon. Finally, next, the Yolo County Transportation District is close to announcing its new executive director. Going forward, the board is focused on broadening the scope of transit district activities, including various mobility options. The good news for Woodland is that we are working on a point-to-point pickup and drop-off system, similar to what Uber Lyft do as well. The forty-two bus, which is our most successful route, would increase from once every hour to every thirty minutes. This is a bus rapid transit concept. The district has also applied for almost three hundred thousand in funds to master plan a trail system in Yolo County that hopefully will include a Class A bikeway route between Woodland and Davis. I also went to coffee with the cop at Morgan's Mill, and it was a wonderful event. My recommendation is not to miss them if you can squeeze them into your schedule. I also want to join my colleague, Councilmember Landsberg, in thanking Woodland Chamber for co-hosting the State of the City program last week. And colleagues, thank you so much, and City Manager for joining in. This was not intended as a precedent for future talks, but seemed like the right approach this year. Thank you, Vicky, for presenting Mrs. Doll with her, with her proclamation. Thank you. I couldn't be in two places at one time. And then finally, the Sacramento Metro Chamber does a Facebook Live program called Tuesday at Two on the Sacramento B site. I was the guest earlier today and was pleased to share an update on the many good things happening in our community. And now for my mayor's minutes. For weeks, we have been urging members of our community to get vaccinated. We have done everything we can think of to make this as easy as possible, including coming to individual homes. But we are not where we need to be. In Woodland, sixty-five percent have had one shot, and just fifty-seven point eight percent are fully vaccinated. Statistics have shown that those with only one shot of Moderna or Pfizer are about forty percent protected from the new and challenging Delta variant, so get the second shot. Now, for those who have tuned, tuned me out at this point, hear this. About ninety-five percent of those currently being hospitalized are unvaccinated, ninety-five percent. And worse, ninety-nine point five percent of those dying from this dreaded disease are unvaccinated, ninety-nine point five percent. Please, folks, do this for yourself, do it for those around you, and do it for our country's well-being. Call Communicare's Hanson Clinic here in Woodland to get set up. This is also the site for the non-invasive spit test to check for COVID. Search the Yolo County, search for Yolo County COVID vaccinations to get the county site with hours more information. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one communication this evening to share. Chief Caff asked that I call attention to the Police Department's annual Citizen Police Academy this fall. There's gonna be a twelve-week course offered by the Police Department, available to adults, residents in the community, as well as employees. The program's offered to design residents an opportunity to get an inside look at the Police Department, how they operate. It's a great opportunity for folks to really understand how Woodland Police goes about their, their business, and also the complexity of the job, the task before them. So encourage folks to sign up. The application period is open until August thirteenth, and then the coursework will begin in September, include in December. So great opportunity. Also, just a quick look at the long-range calendar coming up. So as the council, I think, is acutely aware, we have a recess coming up. So the next meeting of the council will resume on August seventeenth. We have a, a very healthy agenda lined up for that meeting. Specifically, I want to call again attention to the swimming pool project, where the staff will present a scope and a funding plan to deliver that second swimming pool. We will also, in partnership with the Council Subcommittee on the American Rescue Plan Funding, present to the council our initial framework for how to begin to consider investing that funding, as well as outline a public input process before finalizing where we want to invest those funds. And then lastly, we'll be providing an update on the city council's strategic goals and actions, and provide an update on how we want to go about moving forward, tracking metrics towards progress on those goals as well. So full agenda coming up on August, so enjoy the few weeks off. That concludes my remarks.
And thank you, Mr. Manager. All right, that brings us to item F on our agenda, the consent calendar. This is items two through fifteen. Is there any item, any member of the council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes, Councilmember Vega, I realize you're going to be excluding yourself from item twelve. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's right. Okay, any additional changes to the consent calendar?
Fernandez has a request. Mayor Steller?
Please proceed.
Item number six, I'd like to vote on that separately.
All right, we'll consider it separately. How about if we can take up item six when we consider the appointment of a districting commission at the end of the agendas? All right? Yeah, okay. We'll, we'll proceed on that basis, so we'll go, we'll deal with the consent calendar, items two through fifteen, excluding item six, and recognizing that Vega, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Vega, will not be participating in item twelve. Can you further changes to the calendar? May I have a motion, please?
Landsberg will move the consent calendar, except for number six.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Garcia Cadena will second.
Thank you, Tanya. So with Landsberg's motion and Garcia Cadena's second team, there being no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Steller?
Aye. So the consent counter passes without item six and item twelve being voted on by four of us, with Mayor Pro Tem Vega not participating. All right, that takes us to item sixteen, public hearings. And I'm accusing myself from this item because of commercial property I own. And so at this point, I'm going to excuse myself in the meeting during the consideration of this item. Mayor Pro Tem Vega, you'll take the chair.
Thank you, Mayor Steller. Okay, so I think, Mr. City Manager, I think I can call for staff presentation. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Ana Canales, who's our assistant planner, who's the lead on this project. She'll do a presentation, then turn it back to council for questions.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening. And are you gonna be presenting something on the screen for us?
Oh, yeah. Here it is. Okay. The item before you this evening includes a request by applicant J D Morgan Revoque Trust. It's for the consideration of a tasting room land use. That's the applicant's property, six-thirty Lincoln Avenue, located in District.
We're getting an echo. I don't know two devices going, or?
Oh, can you hear me better now?
Yes, it's gone. Thank you.
Okay. As for consideration of a tasting room land use, since the applicant's property at six-thirty Lincoln Avenue, located in District C, the downtown specific plan. District C of the specific plan doesn't presently provide a way for tasting room land use to be considered, and so the request requires an amendment to the downtown specific plan to consider tasting rooms as an allowed use. The applicant will first, or has first facilitated the request to amend the downtown specific plan. Then upon council approval of the requested amendments, staff will act on a subsequent administrative permit application for the property in conformance to the new adopted requirements. The downtown specific plan was originally adopted in nineteen ninety-three and updated in March of two thousand and three. It incorporates the central core Woodlands downtown, covering approximately a hundred and thirty-nine acres in total. The plan is broken down into five districts identified as A through E, which are intended to represent different sub-areas of the downtown. District C is located in both the north and south areas of the specific plan. It functions as a transition between downtown core and adjacent residential areas, and primarily consists of low-intensity office uses, residential land uses, and some light industrial and institutional uses. There are a few land uses currently outlined in the downtown specific plan, which are identified as having similar intensity and function to a tasting room land use, and these are outlined in the next slide. The first table displayed in the slide shows that full-service restaurants, which can serve beer and wine, are currently allowed in all districts of the specific plan, with District C requiring conformance to an outlined set of performance standards. Further, wine tasting is identified as a land use currently allowed in District A of the specific plan with a conditional use permit. And general retail and gift shop land uses are presently allowed in all districts, with the exception of District C, where there are not presently options to consider these land uses. The second table displayed in the slide recommends, provides recommendation for proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan to allow consideration of tasting room and specialty retail land use in all districts of the plan. Tasting room land use is proposed to be accessory to artisan food and beverage retail sales, and specialty retail land use is proposed to allow for the sales of locally sourced or locally produced goods, including artisan food and beverage retail sales. Upon assessment of existing and historic land uses in District C, Scott proposed that specialty retail, including the sales of artisan food and beverages, could complement other uses found in this district. Due to the nature of District C as a transition area between the downtown core and adjacent residential land uses, staff recommend consideration of specialty retail land use with a zoning administrative permit in District C. A zoning administrative permit involves a staff-level review, public noticing, administrative staff-level hearing. It further allows conditions of approval to be placed on the use that's needed to address any potential impacts to potentially sensitive adjacent uses. For example, a zoning administrative permit would allow for staff to attach conditions of approval to a permit related to such items as outdoor uses, amplified music, and hours of operation as appropriate. In all other districts generally located away from residential and sensitive uses, specialty retail is recommended as an allowed use. And tasting rooms are recommended as an allowed use if in conformance with outlined performance standards, which will be discussed in the next slide. The following are some of the key proposed performance standards recommended for tasting room land use. Standards would require that outdoor dining and seating be conducted as an accessory use to an eating and drinking establishment that is located on the same parcel, an immediate adjacent parcel, or on public right-of-way, immediately adjacent to the tenant's space. Hours of operation for outdoor dining and seating be associated with the hours of operation of the associated restaurant, other eating and drinking establishments, or commercial uses. And be limited to the hours of eight AM to ten PM. Hours later than ten PM would likely require zoning administrative permit. The standards provide additional criteria clarifying. The standards provide additional criteria clarifying permitting parking to be provided according to, permitting parking to be provided according to required ratio outlined in the City of Woodland Municipal Code. Proposed uses to be accessory to a retail sales facility. Outdoor events to be subject to special event permit. And music subject to city noise ordinance requirements. Staff have used the definitions identified in the slide to facilitate the evaluation process. The proposed tasting room land use is not considered to fall under the category of a wine bar, which will continue to fall under the bar's land use category in the downtown specific plan. From an intensity standpoint, specialty retail land use is considered potentially less impactful than other uses already permitted in District C of the plan, such as restaurants and cafes. And specialty retail is intended to be distinct from general retail. With the specifications outlined in specialty retail definitions, staff find it would be less impactful than a general retail use. The Planning Commission reviewed the project at a public hearing on July 1st. The city received no public comment regarding the proposed project at this time. After consideration deliberation, a motion recommending city council approval of the project was made. A second motion was made to recommend the approval of the project, which carried on to a unanimous vote of seven to zero. Public notice was prepared by city staff in the form of a one-fourth page legal notice published in the Woodland Daily Democrat 10 days prior to the public hearing. The project proposal has been reviewed by city departments, including the City Economic Development Division and City Police Department. Staff are in support of the proposed use and location. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. Your report includes a recommendation to adopt the downtown specific plan amendment, including the proposed performance standards. And I believe applicant Jeff Morgan is in attendance this evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Canales. I appreciate your presentation. So I believe at this time we can open it up for public comment. Mr. Walsh, is that correct?
If there is, you can give the council the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have of staff before public comment, if you like.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, then I will open it up to my colleagues. Does anybody have questions for staff or comments to share?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, this is Rich Landsberg. I want to follow up with a question for Anna Canales. And it's this. I understand that during the public, or the Planning Commission meeting, public comment was invited, but there were no public comments. Besides the newspaper article, was there outreach to the community that's pretty close to Mr. Morgan's site? The reason I ask that is there are at least two churches and several homes pretty close by. I want to make sure those folks had ample opportunity to be heard. So can you enlighten me a little bit on, besides the newspaper clipping that nobody looks at, was there any other attempt to outreach to the public?
Oh, certainly. So indication from the applicant, and maybe he can elaborate on it if he'd like, was that he reached out to neighboring uses, including the church across the street. And everyone was found to be in support of the proposed use.
Great, can we put the applicant on?
Yeah, I'm on, if you'd like me to respond. This is Jeff Morgan. We did, we went to several homes and the various churches and businesses within 300 feet of the facility and spoke with each one of them. And we had no pushback at all from the idea of having a tasting room there. In fact, they were all quite supportive of it. There was no rejection at all. The church across the street, we have a very symbiotic relationship with, and they use our parking lot quite often for church events. And I've known the minister there for several years, for the.
Sounds good, Jeff, thank you. While I have you on the line, are you familiar with Tin City in Paso Robles?
Not, unfortunately, no.
Because your vision, Jeff, reminds me of a project that is overwhelmingly successful in Paso Robles, which as you know, is saturated with wine country. However, we're pretty close to wine country as well, with Yolo County vineyards. I was hoping that you had a vision for a Tin City type venture, where it would be more than one tasting room, but all the wineries in the county and the vicinity can gather in one walkable area, such as your location there, and have tasting rooms, et cetera, and invite. Also, they have restaurants there. It's pretty cool. If you get a chance to go to Paso Robles, look up Tin City, you would be impressed. Sponsored by their city and their wine industry. I think your vision is pretty good for that location. It's a beautiful location, and I wish you well with this project.
Thank you very much. We have two other properties in downtown Woodland that we're establishing a vision for right now. One is, I call it the bar facility, which is right off of First Street. It's brick buildings, steel building. Have what used to be the building, building that's rather large, 100 square feet. So the, this plate is with regard to what goes into those. We're looking at, quite honestly, a beer garden in the bar facility. But the whole idea is to create spaces that people can come together in downtown and really enjoy the city. So any ideas like that, I'm wide open to. In fact, I'll be here to look up the city, it's Paso Robles, and see what it's all about. I love it, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Morgan.
Member Fernandez.
Yeah, Councilwoman Ricky Fernandez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Again, I had the same concerns and questions to our city manager regarding the location and the church sites and residents nearby. My concern with the response was that basically the property owner is the one who is addressing and informing people of that request to change. It's not the city's responsibility, is that how I understood it? The city does not reach out to the residents and the surrounding businesses? Anna?
Oh, sorry, sorry. The city prepares the public noticing, which go out typically in the form of a mailer or newspaper ad. And the applicant is further encouraged to reach out concurrently to neighboring uses.
Yeah, so that would be my concern, is that the residents are being contacted by the actual owner versus the city announcing or giving the residents and the churches or businesses the opportunity to respond to the city versus the property owner. And secondly, I'd like to also clarify, is that zoning, the Z zoning, is that proposed? Or is that, is that what the little chart had? That it would be a condition?
I can go back, sorry. Is this the table?
Proposed amendment to the downtown specific, yeah. So the Z option is what would be proposed for District C, which is request review through zoning administrative permit, is that correct?
Yes, that's what's being recommended. And the zoning administrator permit is an entitlement that's processed at the staff level and would also require noticing. So subsequent to any determination upon approval, noticing would go out again to process the zoning administrator permit.
So every, every property owner who would wish to provide or change or include a tasting room of some sort would then go through the city, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And my only recommendation is that, I know that you guys have plenty of work to do, but that the announcement be made by the city to the residents in the surrounding area versus the property owner, because it may be intimidating to someone who is being approached by the owner to respond honestly, if they agree or disagree. So I would just recommend that it should come perhaps from the city, an independent source, so that the community members or residents in the surrounding area would have the opportunity to give their honest opinion or not feel any sort of concern to upset a neighbor. So that would be my only suggestion.
Councilmember Fernandez, I just wanted to speak to the noticing really quick to clarify one point. And that is that the reason why at this point in the process, we only did the one, the notice in the newspaper as opposed to specific to this property, is because it had kind of a broader effect. There was a change throughout the specific plan area for the, you know, the requirements as to tasting rooms. So technically, if we only, if we only noticed people around Mr. Morgan's property at this point, we could get complaints from other people that owned other properties that maybe at some point in the future could be, could be, you know, taking advantage of this, that they didn't get notice at this time. And so because of that, at the outset, where we're changing everything, you know, changing the specific plan generally, we do the newspaper notice. But when, when Mr. Morgan comes back in for his zoning administrator permit, then the, then the neighbors do get a notice from us. And so they would get that at that point. And because he's coming in for his specific property at that point, that's why we do it you know, within 300 feet of his property and speak to everyone. I think he just spoke to the neighbors kind of as a courtesy, so that they are aware. But they will get the notice and have the opportunity to speak up if they like, when he comes in for the secondary permit.
Thank you for the clarification. And just, it just seems that if it is a zoning change for, it's impacting different residential areas, right, it's a transitional area for District C. So my only concern was that people may not be aware of it until after it happens. And so then, but, so thank you for the clarification.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Morgan.
Council, and I appreciate the concerns of the neighbors. It's important to me, too, that they feel a free voice to speak up and express their true feelings. The person that did go out and talk to them with a six-month-old assistant from the. Hopefully, they didn't feel too intimidated. It certainly wasn't, not that I'm an intimidating person. But I just want to point out, in the sake of the council, is that this site is allowed to have a restaurant, which restaurants serve food and alcohol, where we're a wine tasting room that serves alcohol that will have food. Impact on the neighborhood will be absolutely nothing. We're really almost dealing with semantics. But you get into ABC regulations, guard duty versus a restaurant. And as a tasting room, I'm allowed to serve only my wine. At the restaurant, I would be required to serve a whole myriad of wine. I'd only be allowed to serve up to 10% of my own wine. So just for the sake of consideration, I want, it's important to me that everyone understands that the impact on the community will be no different than if one had a restaurant there, which is allowed under the plan now.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, for that clarification. Councilwoman Fernandez? Do you have any follow-up questions or comments?
Sorry, thank you. And this is Councilmember Garcia Cadena. I would just like to thank Mr. Walsh for that clarification. So I appreciate that. So we do know that an notification will go out to community members from the city with a specific application, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I, that's it for me, thank you.
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Rich Landsberg, can we get Ken on the line? I have a question for Ken, and perhaps more of a comment, want a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ken, either you or Anna can answer this question, because I think there's some confusion amongst a couple of my colleagues. And that is, this is just the first step to change the zoning. But perhaps you can outline what Mr. Morgan would have to do once this is processed, and if it passes, what steps he would have to take regarding licensing with ABC, et cetera, and obtaining a CUP from the city on top of that.
Yeah, so certainly, and just to add one more point of clarification. So the application that Mr. Morgan has submitted actually prompted us to look at the downtown specific plan. Currently, the plan did not allow tasting rooms. And so what we are proposing at a staff level to the council is that the council first amend the zoning to allow this type of use. If the specific plan is amended as recommended, that will then allow Mr. Morgan to come back in and submit a zoning administrator permit for a site-specific application at 6:30. And we will process that and provide the noticing required. Currently, and or after that, Mr. Morgan then will be required to submit to ABC an application for requesting the appropriate license type for this address. ABC then would conduct their own investigation, contact the city to confirm that the use is in fact allowed at the location proposed, and seek input from law enforcement, as well as the city regarding any concerns we might have if ABC were to issue that permit. So we provide attestation that the use is allowed to ABC that they then rely on before issuing the permit. So hopefully, that provides a little bit of clarification. Councilmember Landsberg, let me know if you need further input on that.
No, I'm good. I'm just hoping that my other colleagues are clear on that. This is the one, the first step of many.
Okay, any additional comments from my colleagues? I have one that I'll add. Just thank you so much for the presentation. And Mr. Morgan, I just wanted to say that I wish you lots of luck. I love the vision for having and building a thriving downtown and hope to see more opportunities for our Yolo Wineries to have some, some opportunity to be tasted throughout our, the tourism industry that comes in. Good luck with everything. And I think now, Mr. Walsh, we can open it up with, for public comment?
Just to note, this is a public hearing item. So just note for the clerk, the time that we're opening the public hearing. And then after anyone gets a chance to make public comment, then we close it. It's a little more formal, since this is a zoning item.
Okay, so at 6:47, I'm opening up for public comment. Is there any, a public hearing, sorry?
I don't have any emails, and I don't have anybody raising their hands.
Okay, do we have to wait?
No, we can close the public hearing now. There's no one interested in speaking.
So no one interested in speaking, it sounds like? So we can go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:48?
If there's no further comment, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I'll make the motion.
Okay, so Councilmember Landsberg makes a motion to adopt the zoning amendment as recommended by staff. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay, seconded by Councilwoman Garcia Cadena. Any additional comment? All right, so Ms. Gonzalez, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Wholeheartedly, aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's.
That concludes item.
Go ahead, Mayor Stallard.
Well, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. That concludes item 16. Let's move on to item 17, an additional public hearing on approval of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. And item 20 also relates to the CDBG program. So without objection, council will take up both items in succession. I'm going to ask Dan Sokolow to present on these items. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor Steller. Dan Sokolow, Senior Planner, Community Services Department. The item for you this evening is our 2122 CDBG Action Plan. The recommendation from staff is to hold a public hearing to receive a public input on the action plan in our CDBG program. And then approve the action plan with the funding allocations as recommended by our CDBG review panel. Give you a quick overview of CDBG. Is Woodland is what's known as an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program. As a result, we receive CDBG funds each year. The amount varies because it's dependent on the federal budget. For this fiscal year, we're receiving about $507,000. This is a slight decrease from the prior, which we received 513,000.
Before you proceed, I'd like to ask the, the technical staff to put your photo up instead of the public hearings at agenda item so that people can see your report as you give it. Would you please? Thank you. Proceed, please.
Thank you. So CDBG, you have to meet one of three national objectives for the use of it. The most common one, which we typically, our activities, our funded activities satisfy is primarily benefits, benefits to low and moderate income persons. The second national objective is to address slums and blind. And the last national objective is urgent need. Under CDBG rules, we can use no more than 15% of our entitlement funding for public services. We can use no more than 20% for administration, staff costs, noticing costs, planning costs. And then what happens, we have the remaining 65%, which is available for infrastructure projects. What the city has done in the last couple of years is we've relied on a three person review panel to assist in reviewing applications and then making funding recommendations at specific funding levels. The review panel is staffed by a member of our planning commission. That's Marco Lizarraga, a member of our Parks and Recreation Commission. That's Rashid Ali, and then a volunteer for senior programs, that is Carol Miller. So based on their recommendations, they did recommending, recommend funding all five of the infrastructure projects that were submitted for, under a CDBG program, as well as recommending funding all of the nine public service activities that were funded through our, that were submitted through our CDBG program. Looking at the construction activities, which are proposed to be funded for the program year 2122, just two highlights, but I'm available for questions in any of the activities. One is the city's ADA Accessibility Project. This, this activity has been funded multiple times, probably every year for at least 10 years and longer. And what it does primarily is address curb ramps, which are not compliant, ADA compliant, or nonexisting at street intersections. A tremendous amount of work has been done throughout the city. There is coordination with bus routes. There's requests that we receive from the community, you know, gee, why can't you have a ramp here? Because this is a heavily traveled quarter. So that was recommended for funding at just under $200,000. The second project, which will take a little bit of explaining, is 40,000 for the library, City Woodlands Library ADA Restrooms Upgrade. Originally, this activity was funded in the 1819 fiscal year at 60,000. What has been accomplished today is the library did hire an architect who designed the improvements. These are the patron restrooms on the main for the library, as well as they did retain construction consultant to provide cost estimates. The cost estimates, so the project has been designed, the cost estimate is in about the $170,000 plus range. So there was obviously insufficient funds to actually bid it out and go to construction. So what we're, we've worked with the library over the last couple of years. So they came in for 50,000, they ended up getting funded at 40. They have approximately 45,000 remaining from their original allocation. We have what's known as a program income. These are repaid, repaid CDBG loans, that's about 93,000. In addition to that, we have about 9,000 of unex, unexpended CDBG funds that were going to be used for construction projects, which are complete. So sometimes you get a residual balance. And so we've put this all together in that total somewhere, I think it's in about the 180,000 plus range. So it may be sufficient to cover the cost of bidding out and constructing the improvements of those two restrooms. I do want to note is that, you know, construction costs have gone up. There'll probably be a need to include some type of contingency in the budget as well as, you know, project management. So we're hoping this will be sufficient to cover those two bathrooms. And it is a much needed improvement for the city's only public library. Looking at the public services side, I think the council is probably familiar with most of the activities. These are, these are nonprofits that we've worked with over the years, including the Food Bank, which would be funded for 11,000 to provide food for food insecure individuals and families in Woodland. Meals on Wheels Yellow County, which provides home delivered meals to lower income seniors and also does a wellness check, which is, is, is very beneficial. Another example is Legal Services Northern California, it's $10,000. They have a fair housing hotline, so they get a tremendous amount of inquiries on fair housing issues. Sometimes they aren't necessarily fair housing issues, but Legal Services does its best to, to, to help the individual, the renter who's calling. They also put on a fair housing workshop. The last one in person was at the Community Center in 2019, was well attended by a significant number of landlords. And they're the ones really, it's critical free information on fair housing to understand what their requirements are, whether it be reasonable modifications and things like that. Other than that, unless council has any other comments, there is a public hearing required for this. So you will need to open the public hearing. If there are any questions council has, staff would be more than happy to address them.
Mayor Steller, you're muted.
Thank you, Dan, as always, for the incredibly detailed and difficult work you do on this for all of us. We certainly thank the CDBG review panel for their volunteer time also in helping us develop, helping you develop the recommendations. Colleagues, does anyone have any questions before I open this, open the public hearing? If not, we open the public hearing on the issue of adoption of the Community Development Block Grant, item 17 on our council agenda. Get it correctly. This is the annual action plan. Anyone wish to comment? Madam Clerk?
No, no, Mayor Steller, I don't have any emails and I don't see anybody raising their hand.
All right. The public hearing is now closed. Council, questions, comments, or a motion, please?
Mayor, I just have a comment.
Was that a, okay, I think Councilmember Lansburg is prepared to make the motion, but you said you had a comment of Mayor Protem Vega?
The other way around.
Oh, so Mayor Protem Vega makes the motion to approve these six recommended actions for this item. Councilmember Lansburg seconds the motion. If I have that right, presuming there's no additional discussion, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Protem Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Lansburg?
Aye, thank you, Dan.
Mayor Steller?
Aye. Sounds like we got a full house there for that one. Thank you. Let's proceed immediately to item 20. And Dan, you can tell us what the action indicated is here, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Steller. So our second CDBG item is, this is one time funding. This is our second allocation of Federal CARES Act's CDBG funds, known as CV3. We were allocated $422,821. Staff's recommendation is that the council hold a public hearing to receive public input on the proposed, what's known as an action plan amendment, to incorporate this funding from the federal government and then approve the recommendation of allocations as put together by our CDBG review panel again. Although we did have one panel member at the last minute who had to back out of the meeting because of a last minute scheduling conflict. To go over this, so the CARES Act included two allocations of CDBG funds for the city. The first one, approximately 302,000, was expended on commercial modular trailers that were used in support of the new homeless shelter at the East Beamer Way Campus at the corner of County Road 102 and East Beamer Street, that provided kitchen, restroom, showers, and laundry facilities. Our second allocation, the 422,000, which is under consideration this evening by the city council. Initially, what had occurred is in December of last year, council went forward and approved using the entire allocation for rental assistance program. We executed a subrecipient agreement with Yellow County Housing, which is the public housing authority countywide, to operate the program. They had been operating a program for the county as well as the City of Davis at that time. Subsequent to those events, Yellow County determined they had, they ended up between the federal government and the state government, receiving in excess, slightly in excess of $13 million for rental assistance. I think a portion of that can use, be used for utility assistance as well. They decided to contract with the State of California. The State of California has a contractor who's running rental assistance programs throughout the state, not for every community, not for every county or housing authority. There were a couple of issues with trying to do our program, the same time the county's doing its program with the state, is the assistance that can be provided through the county program as administered by the state is significantly more than we can provide. I think our cap was $3,000 to try to spread the money. Another aspect is that the dollars provided by the county to the state, I think were more flexible in terms of the connection to the pandemic. So our CDBG dollars were slightly burdensome as it related to that in terms of having to make a connection to the pandemic that your income went down. Both programs do address lower income households. After consultation with staff from Yellow County Housing and city staff, the recommendation is that we rescind the earlier approval by council. We didn't want to be on a different page with the countywide program. We thought that would be confusing to consumers in Woodland and perhaps cause more problems than benefits. So we regrouped and what we have before you this evening is to spend the entire amount allocation. This is, these are one time funds on public services. Staff put together a notice of funding availability that went out last month. So we did receive eight applications for the funds, some varied projects or activities. Our review panel met earlier this month. They recommended funding seven of the eight, one they did not recommend funding for it. And I would, if, if it's okay with council, I'll go, you know, highlight what the recommendations are. There's some pretty significant projects that are proposed for funding. These are public services. These would be carried out during this fiscal year 2122. One of them is for Yellow Community Care Continuum. As you know, they provide permanent supportive housing for mentally ill adults. They also have a respite facility in Woodland for mentally ill who are coming out of the hospital. They probably do other activities that I'm not detailing. One of the things they found during the pandemic is that they were frankly not up to speed. They don't have an electronics, electronic records system. So they're proposing to purchase the system as well as to hire staff who would help bring them up to speed, as well as purchase some resources that when the next, whether it be a pandemic and perhaps a pandemic of this nature, of this extent, is a number of years off. But when they have health related issues, that they have the supplies. So they're better positioned when the unexpected does happen. So they're recommended for funding. It would be more than 76,000 for them. Another highlight is Yellow Way First Center for the Emergency Shelter. What they sought funding for is essentially a clinical director, a licensed mental health professional to oversee not only case management at the shelter, but there are other functions because they do operate permanent supportive housing in multiple locations in Woodland. And they operate obviously some other programs as well. We have encouraged Fourth and Hope, also known as Yellow Way Federal Center, to ramp up their case management, particularly at the shelter. The gold standard, which is going to take some time to get to, would be one case manager for every 20 clients. The reason this is important is while we do have a new shelter, it's a nice facility, supporting clients when they come in, whether it be with getting them into services, whether it be mental health, substance, substance use, treatment, getting them benefits, getting motivated to look for jobs, get training. Is you don't want to warehouse people, you want outcomes where people transition into more stability, in particular permanent supportive housing, or, or it can be community housing depending on their needs. So there is funding slightly more than 71,000 to assist them with their behavioral health program. The final activity that I'll highlight is City of Woodland. City of Woodland, a number of years ago, through Measure J and then Advisory Measure, is funding utility assistance for low income property owners who are on fixed incomes. In many cases, some of them tend to be, I think, older. Social Security may be their only income source. There's been a tremendous amount of assistance provided them this year. I believe in the budget was a quarter million dollars. Finance staff expects that funds, those funds to be exhausted before the summer's out. There is a significant backlog of utility customers who are delinquent. And while not all of these are lower income individuals and families, which probably a significant amount are. So what the funding allocation, which is, is, is pretty significant. It's almost 173,000 would be used to extend this program as long as possible. Similar to the existing city program, the maximum assistance would be $480 for, for no more than six months. With CDBG, you can't do subsistence payments for more than six months. That's why we've, we've shown it as six months. People would have to be income qualified. And what they've done with the existing city program, that's if you're eligible for PG&E's care program, you are income qualified and that does, that's consistent with lower income households under CDBG income limits. So other than that, the, you know, the funding is probably no great shock is for public services to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus COVID-19. So that's, you know, that's what each activity has to have that connectivity. There is a public hearing required for this. These are one time funds. These are investments that the city, the city council would be making in the community. The, the seven activities, actually seven proposed subrecipients who receive funding. We do interact with them in our regular annual CDBG program. And, and then particularly during the pandemic, we've interacted with them, you know, in other manners. For example, in Parialo, which is proposed to receive funding of 20,000, they were, their case managers did staff the two project room keep sites in Woodland and were quite successful, quite committed. So nonetheless, unless there are any, you know, if council has any questions, staff would be happy to address them. And we do need to open a public hearing for the items. And we do need to open a public hearing for that, as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Colleagues, any questions or comments before we go to our public hearing? Tanya Garcia-Cadena. You're muted, Tanya.
Thank you, Mayor Stollard. So, Dan, I just wanted to clarify. So for the City of Woodland Utility Assistance, that 480, that's cumulative, right? That's not 480 monthly.
That's correct. That's a cumulative amount. You're correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Dan?
Mayor Stollard, I have a question.
Mayor Protan Vega, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Dan, thank you so much for the presentation and overview. I have a question about the utility assistance program. So this is specifically for lower-income owner occupied. Are, what about the folks that are renting? Would the county, through their utility assistance support program, extend support to folks that are renters? Or are they?
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting you, Councilmember Vega. You're correct. The $13 million that's funding the countywide program does have the ability to use those funds for utility assistance as well. And there may be other pots of funds out there, but I know the countywide program does have that element as well. And that's, that's a renter-only program.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, I just want to make sure that folks that are renting have the ability to get support here. Thank you. That'll be all. Thank you, Mayor Stollard.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, you know, open the public hearing for discussion on item 20 relating to the Community Development Block Grant, Development Block Grant Action Plan Amendment 2. Council members, it's up to us now. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion, Mayor Stollard, moved by Mayor Protan Vega.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Vega, and seconded by Councilmember Fernandez. So we have the motion, and we have the second. For the discussion, there being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Vega.
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stollard?
Aye. Thank you. That concludes both items 17 and 20 relating to the Community Development Block Grant. Thanks again to all for the hard work on this one. We now return to item 18. By the way, 18 and 19 are both annual public hearings we have. One relates to weed abatement, the other two leans for non-payment of garbage bills. So these should go fairly quickly. Just brief staff reports, please. Emily Walling, would you report, please, on the weed abatement program parcels, not on compliance?
Yes, absolutely. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So yes, as you said, this is an annual lien that we have that goes to properties that do not abate their properties within the compliance date that we give them. Just to walk you briefly through, we send them a letter typically, I think it was April 30th of 2020. We had nine parcels that did not abate their weeds within the compliance date, all ranging from about $220 to $510 each to abate their weeds for them. So we put that on the lien. We add a bit of an administrative fee for the amount of time it takes us to process the letters and notify them and have our own public hearing, coming to a total of $2,834 that we send to the Yolo County Tax Assessor. And that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Emily is our fire marshal and operates our risk reduction office for our city. Thank you, Emily. It sounds like not too many parcels involved this year.
No.
Questions, comments, or motion?
Mayor, I have a comment, and it's not a good one. And it's for Emily. Emily, it appears, looking at the list, it's the list of usual suspects. Why aren't these people being cited? This is a safety issue for our community. You're the fire marshal. Issue them a citation and make them mow their lawn or their weeds.
Thank you, Councilmember Landsberg. Yes, per the ordinance, we follow the steps for weed abatement, but we will read the ordinance again and see what abilities we do have to cite them. I understand through conversations that a lot of times these property owners don't mow because they know that we're going to abate them for them. But that is an avenue that we can look down to see if we can cite them first and make this more of a penalty for them, because you're absolutely right. These are repeat offenders that we're seeing every year. Thank you.
Additional questions or comments? Okay, the action is to allow us to go forward with putting liens on these properties to recover the expenses of the city. Is there a motion to approve the action in item 18?
Mayor, Mayor Stollard, I just wanted to confirm that we did open the public hearing.
We did, and, oh, I guess I forgot, actually. Sorry. So we will open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Public hearing. Is there comments or questions on this from the public? Madam Clerk?
No emails, nobody raising their hand.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Walsh, for catching around that one. Public hearing is now closed on this item. It's now time for the council to develop an appropriate motion.
I will accept the proposal, the proposal.
Councilman Garcia-Cadena recommends approval of the action. Councilmember Fernandez seconds the action. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Protan Vega.
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stollard?
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to items 19, that's Waste Management liens. And again, simply those who got behind in their garbage bills. Clerk, our clerk, Anna Gonzalez will report. Anna?
Thank you. Yes, good evening, councilmembers. This is exactly right. This is the annual public hearing for the Waste Management liens for the 2021-22 tax roll. I do want to just say that the liens are from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2021. So liens are always a year behind the tax roll. And this is the public hearing where customers have an opportunity to, you know, just to say something before their property is lien. And the lien is cleared once the, both installments of the property taxes are paid. And this year, we have 305 properties that are going to be leamed with Waste Management liens.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any questions from members of the council? I will now open-
I have a question.
Proceed, proceed, or Protan Vega.
Thank you. I had a resident reach out to me that had concerns about a lien put on his property. So he was, received notice. He purchased the house, was newly owned the house, and received the notice of these passed to bills and was concerned. So the person that was named in the bill no longer lives on the property. So does the lien follow the property? Or does it go after the previous property owner?
Why don't we-
It goes after the-
That's all right. I was going to refer to Mr. Walsh. Go ahead, Anna, you know from experience.
Yeah, it goes after the previous property owner. And usually, when the house is being sold, all that should come up on the title report. And all that should be cleared before they purchase a home. So I'm not sure why the liens are still on there. Usually, those are cleared before the house. You can have them call me.
Before the house can transfer, okay, transfer ownership. Okay, okay. Maybe it was a rental situation, but I, okay, I'll go ahead and have them contact you. Okay, thank you.
Good question. And the title company, if there was an escrow, should have caught this as well. Any additional questions of Anna before we proceed to our public hearing? All right. Public hearing is now open on item 19 relative to Waste Management liens on properties behind in their payments. Any comments from the member of the public, Madam Clerk?
No, no emails, nobody raising their hand.
Close the public hearing on this item. Bring it back to council for action. Thank you. Councilmember Garcia-Cadena moves the action. And I can't see anybody else's. Just raise your hand.
I'll second Mayor Stollard.
All right, I'll take Mayor Protan Vega's second on that. Thank you, Rich. I saw you there hanging there. And we'll now call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Protan Vega?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stollard?
Aye. That concludes the action. It also concludes our public hearings for this evening. So we move along now to reports at the city manager. Before we discuss the appointment of members of the Advisory Redistricting Commission, we're going to return to item 6, which was on our consent calendar but removed from it, to consider an amended resolution establishing an Advisory Redistricting Commission for the 2021 redistricting process. And essentially, there was an incorrect cross-reference indicated in the staff report. Mr. Manager, do you want to add anything additional to that?
Yeah, no, as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, in preparing for this week's item to appoint the Advisory Redistricting Commission, we noted in the resolution that the council passed the last meeting, or actually, on June 1, that there was an incorrect cite referenced in the text of that resolution. So on consent, we prepared an amendment to that resolution to properly cite the code section consistent with the council's direction to adopt an advisory commission as opposed to an independent commission.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there council discussion? I know there's a split vote on this, but that's okay. It's democracy, right? So do we have discussion, or can we go to a motion?
Fernandez, I was the one who pulled it. I just wanted to clarify. The noted section is, when we voted on the June 1 meeting, was correctly stated with reference for the procedures of choosing a commission. I just want to clarify that because, as I understood it, I voted on an item at that meeting, understanding that the commission would have certain criteria. So are we stating that that was the error? Or that it was just noted differently, and we are changing the section that we're referring to? So I'm looking for clarification, I think.
Yeah, so the Elections Code, Section 23003, speaks to an independent or a hybrid commission. The council's action and motion that ultimately should have been captured in the resolution spoke to an advisory commission. And that section under the Election Code is actually 23002. So we improperly cited in the resolution the code section spoke to the type of commission that the council wanted to establish.
And just to add on to that, the criteria that were explained to the council at the, during the staff presentation and in the staff materials, were the criteria for 23002, the one that we're correcting it to. So everything that we told you during the meeting was that it was essentially the criteria that would be in place for the advisory commission. And in the original resolution, in the recitals, it referred to 23002. And there was just an oversight in the actual resolved clause of the resolution to 003. So it was really a mistake. But what we told you at the meeting was consistent with the correction that we've made for this meeting.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that I can continue to be consistent with my vote because I voted a certain way, or do I just, I'm looking for clarification? Am I just making sure that we have entered it correctly? And it has nothing to do necessarily with how I understand my position on my vote at the time? Can you answer that for me?
Yes, your vote, what you voted on last time is the same thing that you're voting on this time. It's really a technical correction. And so however you voted last time, you know, to be consistent, you should vote the same way.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right. Are we ready to proceed to a motion, friends?
I will make the motion, Mayor Stollard.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena moves the action. Is there a second? Just signify while raising-
Second, Mayor Stollard.
Thank you. Mayor Vega, Mayor Protan Vega seconds the motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Protan Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Landsberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stollard?
Aye. So that completes the discussion on item 6. And that allows us to roll right along into the second-last item on our agenda, which is the appointment of members to the Advisory Redistricting Commission we just approved in the last action. So Mr. Hyatt, do you want to report on this?
I'll offer a quick introduction, and then I've asked our city clerk, Anna Gonzalez, to provide the full presentation. But if you now recall, right, the council, as part of its obligation to establish revised maps under the California Elections Code, established a process whereby you elected to establish an Advisory Redistricting Commission and gave direction in June to have the staff solicit applications for those positions, ultimately to be comprised of five individuals, preferably representing geographically dispersed areas through the community, and even specifically preferencing representation from each district. We issued those applications or called for applications in June and closed that period at the beginning of July. And now have reviewed those applications and presenting a recommendation before you this evening for formation of the committee. So I'll have Anna Gonzalez walk you through the applications that we've received, the recommendation for the composition of the commission that we'd have before you, and then provide a little bit of context after tonight's establishment of the commission, what the next steps will be before bringing back ultimately either a single map or a series of maps recommended by the commission. So Anna, you want to walk the council through the applications received and the recommendation?
Yes, thank you. So as the city manager, Ken Hyatt, mentioned, the recruitment period closed on Friday, July 9. And we received 11 applications from residents interested in serving on the commission. We received at least one application from each of the districts. And the recommendation for this evening, after the applications were reviewed in individual consultation with the council members, is to appoint Robert Seamus to District 1, Mary Kimball to District 2, Anne East for District 3, David Moreno, District 4. And it was recommended to appoint Marco Lizarca to District 5. But it was brought to our attention that he currently is a planning commissioner. And so our city code specifically states that no appointee may serve to more than, may serve on more than one board or commission. So the recommendation is to appoint Peggy Bernardi, who was the other applicant to District 5. Following the appointment of the commission members to the Advisory Redistricting Commission, staff will assist the members with outreach plans, collecting data, conducting public forums, and drafting maps. And just a reminder that the work of the Advisory Redistricting Commission is advisory, and the city council ultimately has the authority to adopt the final map.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's the status of the recommendation. Council members, do you have any comments or questions of the city clerk on this matter?
Mayor, I can, I just want to brag for a moment that my district had four submissions for this commission. So it's bragging. I'm not ashamed of it. I'll move it if necessary.
Thank you. Vicki, did you want to comment before we go to- Thank you. Vicki, did you want to comment before we go to a motion?
Yes, I would. Again, I would just like to thank all the residents who submitted their applications. And in reading through all of them, I was very impressed with the residents who took an interest in participating in this redistricting advisory commission and appreciate the fact that you realize the importance of a transparent and impartial process. So I thank you all for your participation. Again, I just want to note that I allowed staff to make the recommendation and choose the candidate for District Four, again, because I want to remain impartial in this process. I want to thank both members of District Four who participated and submitted their application. And also would like to note that if anyone, I believe there's still a position open for the Yellow Habitat Conservancy. So if anyone who submitted an application for this process would be interested in serving at the county level, please reach out to the city staff. I again want to just thank the members and my colleagues for the thorough review of applicants and this process. So thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez, would you be willing to second this motion to appoint these people? He will? That's a yes? Okay, because you're muted. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Lansburg, a second by Councilmember Fernandez, to accept the recommendation of the city clerk based on her work and to make the appointments as indicated. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, and before I do, I just want to comment that there are no emails or no hands raised.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, Mayor Portman Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Garcia Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Lansburg?
Aye.
Mayor Stalard?
Aye. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that work and to the citizens that have volunteered, as Councilmember Fernandez pointed out. All right, this brings us to our ultimate item of the evening, item 22, a first reading of a proposed ordinance, adding a section to the municipal code relating to residential container location requirements. I see that Ken Lohman, our environmental analyst, is scheduled to present. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, my name is Ken Lohman. I'm the Environmental Sustainability Manager in the Community Development Department. And let me bring up my screen here. Oops, that's not showing yet. Okay. Now, why is it not? So Ana, it's not letting me share my PDF.
Jay?
Files.
Jay, are you?
Perhaps-
Ken, this is Jay.
Yeah.
If you want to email that to me, I can share it myself for-
If I share my screen and bring it up on my screen, will everyone see it okay?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will just do that. And then do this. Okay, can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So this item adds a section specifically 13.08.170 to the municipal code related to residential container location requirements. This establishes some new requirements that are related to where people's trash recycling and green waste containers will go and deals with a couple of other minor items as well. This was first brought to your attention in April, and in your conversation at that time, two concerns were raised. One was that the language required residents to put their carts out no earlier than 6:00 PM the day before their scheduled pickup day. And the other one was that there was a perception that the ordinance focused too much on punitive action rather than on education. And as a result, no action was taken, and you asked staff to make some adjustments and come back to you. So to refresh your memory about why this is important, it basically deals with two things that are in your priority goals. So visual blight and public health hazard reduction and strengthening code enforcement. Additionally, it clarifies some issues related to alley placement. There are some areas in the city where carts are collected in alleys, and there aren't really good requirements for how that's to be done. Some examples of where these things, you know, are popping up and how they look when they do and the problems they create are mostly self-apparent. So some of them get left out where they shouldn't be, and they can kill the grass and don't look so great. Visual blight issues from carts in driveways and exposed in front yards. One problem is that they tend to overflow or collect other additional things that shouldn't be left out. And much as they try, they can't seem to hide themselves, or at least not very well. Sometimes even when there are gates that might be leading to backyards where they could be politely closeted away. Additionally, it's important to recognize that most residents are screening their carts or at least making an effort to get them out of the way of public view. The one on the right there maybe gets a nod for trying, but not too hard. The one on the left is pretty good, although some could argue that it's still visible and could be considered an issue. Most residents also know how they should be handling their carts. But we do find that some need some more guidance. And in that case, the approach that we've been taking is education first and then enforcement, and that's a multi-step process. And it's common to multiple different program areas. So in this particular area, environmental services staff, in responding to a complaint or if we see an issue that seems to be an ongoing problem, then we'll start out usually by tagging or leaving a flyer at the residents, letting them know that there's a problem and what they should be doing to correct it. We might be doing some combination of these four items, tagging and firing letters, phone calls, and in person. And when we've exhausted these steps and are getting nowhere, at that point, we'll hand the case off to code enforcement. And usually what happens with code enforcement is they'll have a conversation too. They don't usually like to rush out and start off with a citation, but they'll try and understand what's going on and see if they can kind of be the bad cop and get people to come into compliance without the need for citation. And finally, if they get nowhere either, then they will cite that particular case. We do have bilingual education materials that we develop about most of the things that we work on. And so this is a copy of the flyer that we might leave, letting somebody know some of the cart etiquette guidelines and how they should be handling their carts and what the rules are. The problem is technically that there's a loophole in the current code regarding residential containers. So the code specifies that containers have to be brought in within 24 hours of their scheduled pickup day. But it doesn't specify how early containers can be put out. So theoretically, someone could bring their carts in and then take them right back out again and leave them there, and they'd be in compliance with the code as it is now. It also makes it impossible for staff to know what is actually happening if they're doing that or if they're not doing that and if we are able to be on solid ground citing them or threatening to cite them. And again, there's not a lot that we're getting to that stage with. But by comparison, other program areas such as our green waste program, the code specifies the times and locations for placement as well as the materials that are acceptable and the dimensions of a street waste, green waste piles in the street and things like that. And so what we're trying to do with this ordinance is to close that loophole. So this would codify the locations and times for placement. We heard the concerns about the 6:00 PM before time and felt that was a really well-identified issue that we'd missed. And so we changed that to 24 hours before and after the scheduled collection day. And so this would conform the requirements of this program with our green waste program and other programs that are similarly structured with an education first and then at the last resort enforcement structure. And then it also clarifies some other issues, in particular, the alley placement issue that I mentioned before. And so I tried to make it brief tonight, so I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Colleagues, do we have questions? Tanya Garcia-Cadena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Lohman, for the changes. My only question is, on your cart guideline, it doesn't mention anything about the screening requirement. And so I'm wondering if that's something that can be added to that. I know that in my neighborhood, I would say that 95% do not have their trash cans screened. They're just kind of up at the top of their driveways there. So I don't think people are aware of that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. As for questions, colleagues?
Mayor Stalard, I have a question.
Mayor Portman Vega?
Thank you. So, Mr. Lohman, thank you so much for bringing this back to council and with some revisions. I do have some questions around some of the neighborhoods over in the Spring Lake area where there's very limited street parking. So just the, how realistic is it to have the three feet between the trash bins and plus the cars that are parked? I'm just kind of trying to visualize that, and it doesn't seem feasible. How are we going to handle that?
That's a good question, and it applies in some infill cases as well. There's a picture we shared with Cal Recycle regarding infill that was basically a street frontage of a project that basically was just all lined up with carts. The issue isn't really one from our perspective, but a mechanical one. The trucks from Waste Management need some space around the carts in order for the grabber to grab them and lift them into the car. So if they're packed too close together, then it's going to either not be able to grab them or it's going to push the others out of the way, possibly knock them over, possibly damage them, cause lots of other problems. So that's not really a thing that's generated from us. It enables the Waste Management Service to proceed more effectively and with fewer damaged carts. But yes, you have put your finger on a conundrum that we have to sort of sort out. And we're trying to figure out creative ways. Our media focus is more on infill. But some of the things we come up with, you know, in the future for those types of developments may be applicable in other areas where there's a tighter fit. Another option is that if the containers are not really being filled, that there may be an opportunity for residents to contact Waste Management and sort of resize their service to have smaller containers and be better able to, you know, manage that.
Yeah, and also just around the enforcement, you know, I've had some residents reach out to me who live near apartment complexes. And your team has helped resolve some of the issues where these trash bins aren't picked up. So I'm concerned if there's a homeowner who has the trash bins, puts them out, can't really fit them within the constraints of the parking because there's somebody else that parks. So then, you know, how is that going to be addressed? And just want to make sure that in the education, that maybe it's not the homeowner, the property owner, or the tenant, but maybe it's, and it's something, somebody else in the neighborhood. So just want to, you know, make sure that we're looking at that and if, when necessary, address this issue with the neighborhood.
Absolutely. And we always encourage people to contact us if there's something going on that is outside their control. And that's actually sort of not an uncommon situation, for example, even in the green waste side, where sometimes it's difficult to figure out exactly where the problem is coming from. Sometimes that's because folks, you know, want to suggest it's somebody else. Sometimes it's because people don't actually know if a car is visiting somebody and it's, you know, causing a problem for someone putting their carts out. It may just be bad timing, but if it's consistent, then we would encourage someone to let us know about that. We can try and track down who owns it and let them know that it might be courteous for them, you know, to be on the other side of the street on the days that that's getting serviced or whatnot.
Yeah, and then, thank you for that. And then one last question just around how we're going to communicate this with the communication plan. Because as Councilwoman Garcia-Cadena mentioned, you know, I don't think folks are aware of this. So just how the notice is going to be sent?
Mostly, we're taking a little bit of a reactive position with this. We're not trying to blow this up bigger than it is. Our main purpose in the ordinance is a cleanup. And we've had one or two cases where it's not that we wanted to cite somebody, but we wanted to be able to tell them we could cite them. And because there's an ambiguity in the code, we can't even be comfortable going out doing that properly. And so what we're doing with this generally is when we get a complaint or when we notice or staff, anybody notices an issue, then we will check it out and reach out to the appropriate homeowners. If we start seeing patterns developing, then we will take a proactive step and put something out on social media and let people know, hey, if you're not aware of this, this is sort of a rule for this type of thing. And sort of be as generic as we can. And then if we find that there's a specific neighborhood where there's a problem, what we'll do is we'll sort of draw a circle around it and shoot a letter out to, you know, maybe a few dozen homes that surround that particular area and let them all know that there's, you know, there's an issue in their neighborhood regarding this and remind them what the rules are and ask for their cooperation in making sure that everybody's being courteous and following those rules and that if they see any problems, to let us know.
Okay, I just, you know, I'm sensitive to changing or implementing some rules. And I understand, you know, that this is necessary to address some of these issues that have existed. I'm just sensitive to imposing a new rule, if you will, and not communicating. So I just would like for you and team to consider putting, there's inserts in those bills to just notify, hey, these are the rules, just so we put the communication out there. I'm sure some folks may not get it, but I think it's the right thing to do. We should notify folks that these are the rules that are going to be enforced.
Yeah, and we do use Waste Management does do bill inserts, and they also do a quarterly newsletter. And we probably put something about that, particularly the screening issue, because that aspect is new. And so to let people know that, you know, the idea here again isn't to be onerous, but to just get the carts off the street. So, you know, they're sort of out of the way.
That'll be all. Thank you, Mr. Lohman. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Council, Mayor Stalard. And thank you, Mr. Lohman, for your attempt to revise a proposed change or a proposed ordinance change. My concern is twofold. One is there are many things that people are currently concerned about. And I don't know that where your totter is located is a priority at this point in people's lives. And I would like to know what is the actual percentage of people who are not abiding by just basic courtesy of putting their totter away? Do we have 90% of our residents who are not abiding by this ordinance? Or is it, you know, 5%? So if it's 5%, are we really, is it really necessary to address this type of enforcement or code and policy change to our residents at this time? And the last thing would be just, just again, that the unnecessary regulations that most of the people follow and that our code enforcement, after writing with Minnie, was basically being sent to places where residents or neighbors were complaining. And her burden seemed to be pretty overwhelming. So again, are we going to provide staffing if we choose to enforce this type of code? And again, is it going to be based on, as you said, neighbors complaining about a specific residence or area? residence or area? So again, I just don't know that it's something that the city should be focusing on at this point in people's lives. So, thank you.
Yeah, we certainly recognize that this is nowhere near the highest priority for most people. And I don't have any statistics on exactly what compliance levels look like on this issue. Our general sense is that the vast majority of residents are in compliance and are courteous in the way they're dealing with their trash and recycling containers. But we do see some issues, particularly also in green waste. We think there's some mirroring there. And the issue for us is that we're all for the education, and that's the primary mission of the way we go about doing things. The problem with that is that there are folks that will not respond to that. And in order to deal with those, we have to have that final step in the spectrum of education to enforcement. We have that in the green waste program. We have that in our water conservation program. We have that in many other programs that the city manages. But in this particular one, we don't have that because the code contains ambiguity about a portion of the time limit for putting out the carts. And all we're seeking to do is clarify that, to bring that into conformity with these other programs that already have that clarity of our ability and authority to cite someone if necessary, or more likely to just let someone know that if they don't comply, that we have the ability to cite them. You know, waving the stick is all we're really after here. We don't really want to use it ever, and we find that just letting people know we have it is usually enough. And so that's really all we're trying to do here is bring this into, you know, conformity with the other code sections and to give us that full range of options in talking with people.
Okay, I think Vicki's concluded her questioning. Any additional questions from other colleagues?
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Lansberg.
I have concerns with just one phrase in the proposed amendment, and it is "screened from public view." I'm going to run the question by Mr. Walsh. I'm concerned it's the constraint on private property. What's to prevent somebody from getting a blanket and putting it over the top of a totter and say it's screened?
Right, well, I think they could make that argument. Obviously, there is some ambiguity in that language, and so it would be hard to make it something like that perfect. So there is some ambiguity there. I would acknowledge that.
Have you run this through the system to see whether this particular phrase is constitutionally valid? I really don't like this particular phrase. It's just, it's my property, leave me alone. It's my totter, leave me alone. If I put it on the street within the designated times, or I put it after, that is my business. There's a lot of things I go around the city that I don't like. I don't like pink houses, for example. Let's all make blue houses. You know, where do we draw the line, Mr. Walsh, that the city's long arm is going to extend into somebody's private property as to where they should put a totter?
Well, I do think...
I don't like that phrase.
Sure, so, and that's absolutely your discretion. I don't think it would rise to the level of something that's unconstitutional to say that it's screened from public view. You know, there's other instances when we would require, you know, screening or, you know, things that would not distract or obstruct folks that are in the public right of way. And so I don't think that phrase in itself would raise any constitutional concerns, but I do acknowledge that, you know, there's a balance between people's public or private property rights and the city's discretion to regulate things, and that's kind of the council's prerogative as to where they want to try to draw that line in the city woodland.
Yeah, well, for the, you know, there's new council members, Mr. Walsh, that aren't aware of the debacle we've had with Waste Management concerning some of the issues still pending, including cameras in the trucks and looking into our garbage to make sure that we're storing it properly. Some of that has been tabled for a while, and looks like we're picking it back up at some other point. But, you know, we need to take baby steps here, because I agree with all the other comments regarding awareness. You know, we're going to take baby steps here. I'm all for the not leaving them out, you know, seven days a week and getting them off the street. I'm in support of that. But right now, you know, we need baby steps to get compliance, and I agree with Councilmember Fernandez, what is the percentage of people who are the SCOP laws? You know, why is it Mr. Lowman's staff knocking on a door and dealing with those individuals? Why are we blanketing the community with this burdensome requirement to be screened from public view? I'm in support of this amendment or this ordinance if we strike that phrase. Otherwise, I would not support it.
Okay, if I can jump in at this point, Mr. Lansberg, I want to agree with you. And "screened from public view" is not an acceptable phrase to me. I see many homes where they're lined up on the side, and they're appropriate looking to me. There's a lot more things going on in front of some of these houses that I would be more concerned about than totters. And totters are a modern response to the old garbage can that was kept in your alley. And now we have, in our house, we have four of them. Thankfully, we have a space where we can put them behind a door, but not everybody does. So I just can't go along with that part of this. I will accept the rest of it. If there's a need to specify that the totter must be on the house side of the sidewalk, you know, we did see one slide of someone's totter sitting out on the parking strip, which, you know, would suggest that they're not in the street. I would say I can go with that, that the totter must be on the house side of the sidewalk. But I don't have a problem. I know many houses where the totters are placed neatly on the side of the property. You know, we tolerate a lot in this community because people have the individual rights. And I'm talking about some houses that look not so very nice, you know, no yard at all, basically weed patches. We're not doing anything about that, and I'm not sure we should, other than hopefully that, you know, being neighborly, people would want to do something better. But who knows? Maybe some people can't afford to do anything better. So anyway, I just find that too, I think that's an overreach from us at this time. I agree that the baby steps concept. So if the staff wants to proceed tonight, for me, my vote is going to have to remove that phrase that Mr. Lansberg expressed concern about. Otherwise, I would suggest that the ordinance still cook a little while before we consider taking action. So that's my perspective, but I would invite any council member who feels otherwise to go ahead and make a motion and say, "See fit."
Mr. Mayor, I will make the motion to approve the ordinance with the language-stricken "screened from public view" in any other part of that ordinance that has such a provision.
Would you care to add that the totter must be kept on the house side of the sidewalk?
Yes.
Oh, well, let's let our city attorney work that up, because this has to come back for second reading if it is successful tonight. Is that correct? I believe.
It does, and I do note that we have a raised hand for public comment as well.
Yeah, oh, excuse me, that's my bad. I think probably council will just take a pause here and hear our public. So, Anna, please, please let us hear from the public.
Mr. Candela? Mr. Candela, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes.
I see two problems. One, you interfere to the property of the people, they have the can garbage, the garbage bucket. And the other one, will we have some exception according with the American Disability Act because we'd be impossible? And I can give you right now more than 50 names to a lot of people. They don't have the ability to take in and out in a specific time. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Candela, and I do believe there are special provisions, because I've seen, I've seen the Waste Management driver get off his truck and bring a totter out of the side yard of one of my neighbors who's elderly and uses a mobility device to get around. And they dump it and they put it back when they're done. So I do believe there are accommodations that are made. All right, we'll return to council action.
Excuse me, I just have a problem. I'm in my property, and you know where I am for 18 years, and I requested to the Waste Management this service. It was never done. I'm totally in a wheelchair, and I have the same problem with the post office. It took me 17 years, an application, to the post office move. So I don't want to take more of your time, but no, that's not the end of it.
Thank you, Mr. Candela. We don't want to talk... We'll save that for another day. All right, I think we've heard what you had to say. We appreciate your commenting. Mr. Lansberg has proposed that we adopt the ordinance with removal of the, and screen from public view, and also allow language to require that the cart be on the house side of the sidewalk, and therefore not in the parking strip or not on the street. And the other members, the staff that's put into this between last meeting and this meeting are accepted in that proposal. Is there a second to that motion? Okay.
I'll second myself.
Oh, I think, okay, Tanya Garcia-Cadena actually got there first. All right, so we have a motion and a second to proceed. And, Madam Clerk, was there any other public comment that I have overlooked?
No.
Thank you. Council, is there further discussion before we proceed to have the clerk call the roll? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Mayor Protan Vega?
Aye.
Councilmember Fernandez?
No.
Councilmember Garcia-Cadena?
Aye.
Councilmember Lansberg?
Aye.
Mayor Stallard?
Aye. Councilmember Fernandez, that makes it a 3-0 night for you. That could be a record for our council. All right. Dear colleagues, it's been a busy year, and we're now going to have a summer break, which I think everybody's going to enjoy, and I hope you all have great opportunities to do some fun things. We will be adjourning and returning on Tuesday, August 17. I want to point out that on Friday at 10:30 to noon, I'm presenting 38 certificates for graduates of a youth leadership program sponsored by UC Davis. Any colleagues that would like to join me for the presentation of those certificates, just let me know. I'd be more than happy to share the load, okay? All right, anything more from anybody before we conclude? Mr. Hyatt?
Yeah, maybe just, I failed to mention during the long-range calendar that the August 17th meeting, we'd previously discussed with the council that we would resume in person. However, given the increasing case positivity rates amongst residents here within Yolo County, my counsel to the city council would be to consider continuing in our current virtual format until we can learn better where we're trending with the COVID virus here in Yolo County.
Okay, without objection, colleagues, that'll be the order. We'll stay virtual at least through August and then reassess, all right? All right, good night, everybody. Have a good evening.
Good night.